Have a job where children will be doting on him and brushing him and pampering him, and he's going to get treats and he's going to be spoiled.
For now, Cowboy's riding days are far from over as a new adventure lies ahead. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Now Cowboy is the second LAPD horse to be donated to the program. While as part of his ongoing work to green the valley, councilmember Bob Blumenfield cut the ribbon on the new Blumenfield Waterwise Demonstration Garden at the West Valley Municipal Center in Reseda. That's the focus of this week in tweets.
Three, two, one.
Councilmember Bob Blumenfield's office tweeted a video of the ribbon cutting in Reseda, posting, "Ribbon Cutting at our Waterwise Demonstration Garden. With 20,000 square feet of turf removed, we can save 500,000 gallons a year." Blumenfield's office retweeted a post from the LADWP which showed a pic of the new water-friendly garden, saying, "Waterwise Demonstration Garden to save 500,000 gallons of water a year. Create your own." The LA Conservation Corps tweeted, "Very proud of our core members who worked on this beautiful Waterwise Demo Garden in CD3." And the LA Public Library also tweeted about the event, posting, "Proud to be part of today's Waterwise Garden Ribbon Cutting and excited to see it become a beautiful blooming field." And that's a look at this week in tweets. While at 70, 80, sometimes 90 years young, many of LA seniors continue to make a difference in our neighborhoods. As Gil Reyes reports, one councilman threw a party to say thanks.
The young at heart, having a good old time.
Oh, while I'm doing a salsa and a little merengue, hey, it's fun.
Hundreds of seniors gathering here at the LA Convention Center for this special luncheon and talent show hosted by Councilman Curran Price. These are people from churches and senior centers, from the Councilman's South LA District primarily, and many of them don't mind telling you that they're remaining very active even during their retirement.
Senior fraud is the number-one form of elder abuse in the country.
Adrian Omansky, a retired teacher, now leads an acting troupe made up entirely of seniors. These actors visit community centers and perform skits about hidden senior scams on the internet.
If you see anything on the computer that doesn't look right, delete. If someone calls you and says to you that you owe money to the IRS, this is one of the number-one scams in the United States.
We need more seniors to become active.
Amos Fried, a retired attorney, uses his legal skills to set up food assistance programs for the needy.
This is, I mean, I'm basically committed to try to help out in this issue, working with the council people.
The seniors bonded over chicken lunch and entertainment.
It's a fun way to celebrate our community, bringing the community together, and celebrating the special role that senior citizens play and continue to play in our community.
Because for them, there's still much more to contribute. In downtown LA, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
And of course, lunch and entertainment were all free. While it was a long time coming, but residents in Woodland Hills finally can enjoy a new community amenity that honors local first responders. This fire truck represents former Fire Station 84, which used to be housed here at Canoga Avenue and Costanzo Street in Woodland Hills from 1949 until 2007, when the station was moved to a new location. And for nearly eight years before becoming this play area for kids, officials say the vacant lot was an eyesore in the community, falling into disrepair and creating blight in the neighborhood. But not anymore, as the site has been transformed into a neighborhood attraction.
I am delighted. We just had this baby in March, and it's exciting for me to take walks in the neighborhood and feel comfortable in the neighborhood, and stop over here, and just sit on the grass and play with him, and one day he'll be able to climb up there, so it's nice.
As the lot sat empty, councilmember Bob Blumenfield reached out to the community to get their ideas on what they wanted at the site. The majority agreed on a park that would honor the old fire station. And after two years, they got what they asked for. Community members recently joined Blumenfield, the Department of Wreck and Parks, and other city officials to help unveil and dedicate two new plaques.
It's not only a great amenity, a parklet for this area, but also a great testament to our public safety folks and specifically for our firefighters.
Residents say the new park adds value to the neighborhood by providing a place where families can gather and spend time. The $1 million park includes a red play structure in the shape of a fire truck, shade canopies, and a drought-tolerant garden.
This is probably the best use of the property that I could think of over the years.
The unveiling comes several months after a ribbon-cutting ceremony introducing the park to the community.
I really like the theme. It's fun. The children seem to really like it, so we're excited about it.
A fire truck that kids can call their own, and what can be better than that? The park will be open from dawn to dusk. While a fundraising event for you and your best friend, Beethoven, comes to life as the LA Philharmonic kicks off its winter season, and a ride at Griffith Park that will scare your socks off. All this and this week's things to do. Here's your chance to spend some quality time with your best bud. For 19 years, Best Friends Animal Society has hosted Strut Your Mut, the fundraising walk and festival that helps raise money for local animal welfare organizations in cities around the country. And this year, they're upping the fun quotient by adding the timed 5K race to even more Strut Your Mut events. So leash up your pup, unleash that inner athlete, and join the fun. Runners will start ahead of walkers, and after the race, awards will be given to the first-place male and female finishers, as well as their pups. All runners get a great Strut Your Mut technical shirt, while dogs receive their own sporty bandana just for participating. The event takes place on Saturday, October 10 at Exposition Park, located at 700 Exposition Park Drive. For tickets, prices, and to sign up, visit strutyourmut.org. The LA Phil's winter season kicks off with the dramatic works of Beethoven for both young ones and adults. Pioneering symphonies for youth mix music with fun and fantasy for children ages 5 to 11. As part of the immortal Beethoven Festival, the Sim Bolvar Symphony Orchestra of Venezuela takes us on an imaginary tour of the house where Beethoven was born. Come for the chance to experience a live orchestra through the fantasy of theater in some of the most exciting music ever written. Each performance is preceded by a choice of art workshops, including an instrument petting zoo, dance, and more. The performance takes place Saturday, October 10 at 11:00 a.m. at the Walt Disney Concert Hall in downtown LA. For tickets to this concert and other immortal Beethoven performances, visit laphil.com. For thrill seekers, check out the Los Angeles Haunted Hayride. The famed Griffith Park attraction takes folks on a ride through the old zoo where they'll face the underworld and portrayals of the seven deadly sins. This year features new mazes, interactive theater, a 40-foot-long leviathan, and returning favorites such as the scary go-round, House of Mirrors, and more. Tickets range from $30 to $58. The adventure begins at 7:00 p.m. at 4730 Crystal Springs Avenue in Griffith Park. Visit losangelishauntedhayride.com for more. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
I got you something very special for our first anniversary. Now, close your eyes. Surprise! It's an emergency preparedness kit. Isn't it great? It's got food, water, first aid kit, and this neat emergency tool for shutting off utilities. Honey, we are going to be prepared for any emergency. Honey? Sweetie? I have one more surprise. This really cool cranking flashlight.
Get the message? Be prepared.
When a physical encounter occurs between man and machine, the machine always wins. Please, don't lose. Obey all the rules of the road.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 a.m., and the public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Our captain from Olympic is here. We can begin. Please call the roll.
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscaino, Sodio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Caress, Cracorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Weston, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Buscaino moves, and Mr. Englander seconds. Next.
Commended resolutions for approval.
Mr. Buscaino moves, and Mr. Bonin seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, say yes Tuesday. Now be the time for the flag salute.
I'm going to ask everyone to rise, and we will be led in our flag salute by Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you. I'll rise and face the flag, the greatest flag on the face of this earth, together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Let's run through the agenda. Madam Clerk?
Items 1 and 2 are items noted for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety, there's requests to continue items 1H, M, Q, Y, AF, and AJ to October 20, and continue items 1I and V to November 10. Also, the department reports that items 1K, NX, AD, AE, AI, AL, and AN may be received and filed. As much as the liens have been paid, there has been a recent change in property ownership, or the properties are single-family owner-occupied dwellings and exempt from lien.
Okay, so without objection, that will be the order? Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on both items.
Okay, then let's move to the next set of agenda items.
Items 3 through 27 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, 3 through 27. Members, any specials? I do not see any. Let's prepare to... Hold item 27, I'm being told. Are we ready to go?
Mr. President.
Okay, we're ready to... Mr. Cracorian?
I call item 3 special, please.
3? We'll hold that or call it special for Mr. Cracorian. Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
There's requests to send items 20 and 21 forthwith.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. Let's move on. Madam Clerk?
Items 28 through 34 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, these items are... Those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on items 29, 30, 32, and 34.
Okay, let's hold those items. Members, specials? I do not see any. Let us prepare to vote. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Continue.
Mr. President, that brings council to presentations or items called special.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna... Before we begin with a very important presentation, we're going to take care of a couple of housekeeping issues here. Mr. Price has arrived. Go to item 29, Mr. Walsh. In fact, Mr. Walsh, just stay here. We're going to go through your items. So please come forward. This is on item 29.
John Walsh, welcome to City Council. HollywoodHighlands.org tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Number 29 concerns housing. As you know, we have a horrible housing situation here in Los Angeles, and this concerns the rent escrow account program, which is a good program, which means that if your landlord does not repair your unit according to code, you can go right to the city, and after that, he doesn't get the rent anymore. It goes into escrow, and he doesn't get it till he repairs your apartment. Remember that. They'll never tell you that. Only a renter like me will tell you. That's what reap is. R-E-A-P. Find out about it. One minute.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Mr. Walsh, don't go anywhere. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Item 30, Mr. Walsh.
Item 30?
Yes, sir.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org tweeting at Hollywood Dems, or go to JWalshConfidential. This is the unsafe, unhealthy site conditions at a housing asset formerly owned by the Community Redevelopment Agency. Now, we abolished the Community Redevelopment Agency, and the tax money that was going to them is now going to the state and to education. And in the last four years, we are responsible. We fought the CRA for $6 billion, $300 million going to the city, the county, and education and special districts that would have gone to the CRA. And even though they got all that money, you can see that the CRA was doing a terrible job on housing assets. There is no more CRA. This little baby CRA they created is nothing. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Don't go far, Mr. Walsh. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Mr. Walsh, 32? 32, sir.
This concerns the national... Oh, this concerns an exemption from one principal project. What is an exemption? The charter says that you must have certain qualifications to hold positions in the city, unless the city council votes to exempt you. Now, that means that they don't mention the name of this person, of this coordinator for Emergency Management Department, but that person does not have the qualifications. Remember, anytime I say something wrong, they jump on me. Anytime they don't say anything, it means I'm correct. So what they're doing here is allowing an unqualified person, according to the city charter, unqualified, to take over this emergency management. Now, in other cities like New York, Chicago, hundreds, thousands of these jobs. Here, we had reform, but the reform is gone now. And what we have here in this city of Los Angeles is many, many people... And how do you get these jobs? You're a friend with the mayor or the mayor's lover, Mr. Glendake, or the mayor's wife, or Mr. Rue's friends, or Ms. Price's friends, and then you get an exemption, and then they... But they have to vote it here. Now, they're not going to say one word. Not one person up here is going to ask, "Who is this exemption for? What are their qualifications?" And remember, this is emergency. We will need the most qualified people on earth in emergency, and this unnamed person... Don't worry about city reporters. They don't give a damn. They're sitting back there smoking weed. HollywoodHighlands.org, this exemption... And these exemptions come through all the time, and we have a host of unqualified people, especially in emergencies, and they don't give a damn.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Don't go anywhere. Let's prepare to vote. Members, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, now how much time does Mr... Okay, Mr. Walsh, you have one minute on this one. It's item 34.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or JWalshConfidential. Okay, these are the maps. What are the final maps mean? The only reason you don't have a high-rise or a mini mall next to you are these maps. These maps are the...
Number 29 concerns housing. As you know, we have a horrible housing situation here in Los Angeles, and this concerns the rent escrow account program, which is a good program, which means that if your landlord does not repair your unit according to code, you can go right to the city, and after that, he doesn't get the rent anymore. It goes into escrow, and he doesn't get it till he repairs your apartment. Remember that. They'll never tell you that. Only a renter like me will tell you. That's what reap is, R-E-A-P. Find out about it. One minute.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Mr. Walsh, don't go anywhere. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item 30, Mr. Walsh.
Item 30?
Yes, sir.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org tweeting at Hollywood Dems, or go to JWalshConfidential. This is the unsafe, unhealthy site conditions at a housing asset formerly owned by the Community Redevelopment Agency. Now, we abolished the Community Redevelopment Agency, and the tax money that was going to them is now going to the state and to education. And in the last four years, we are responsible. We who fought the CRA for $6 billion, $300 million going to the city, the county, and education and special districts that would have gone to the CRA. And even though they got all that money, you can see that the CRA was doing a terrible job on housing assets. There is no more CRA. This little baby CRA they created is nothing. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Don't go far, Mr. Walsh. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. Walsh, 32? Thirty-two, sir.
Thirty-two. This concerns the national... Oh, this concerns an exemption from one principal project. What is an exemption? The charter says that you must have certain qualifications to hold positions in the city, unless the city council votes to exempt you. Now, that means that they don't mention the name of this person, of this coordinator for emergency management department, but that person does not have the qualifications. Remember, anytime I say something wrong, they jump on me. Anytime they don't say anything, it means I'm correct. So what they're doing here is allowing an unqualified person, according to the city charter, unqualified, to take over this emergency management. Now, in other cities like New York, Chicago, hundreds, thousands of these jobs. Here, we had reform, but the reform is gone now, and what we have here in this city of Los Angeles is many, many people... And how do you get these jobs? You're a friend with the mayor, or the mayor's lover, Mr. Glenn Dake, or the mayor's wife, or Mr. Rue's friends, or Ms. Price's friends, and then you get an exemption, and then they... But they have to vote it here. Now, they're not gonna say one word. Not one person up here is gonna ask, "Who is this exemption for? What are their qualifications?" And remember, this is emergency. We will need the most qualified people on earth in emergency, and this unnamed person, don't worry about city reporters, they don't give a damn, they're sitting back there smoking weed. HollywoodHighlands.org, this exemption, and these exemptions come through all the time, and we have a host of unqualified people, especially in emergencies, and they don't give a damn.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Don't go anywhere. Let's prepare to vote. Members, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now how much time does Mr... Okay, Mr. Walsh, you have one minute on this one. It's item 34.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or JWalshConfidential. Okay, these are the maps. What are the final maps mean? The only reason you don't have a high-rise or a mini-mall next to you are these maps. These maps are the... Give the entire area the zoning. What they do is slip an amendment into the maps, no one will ask any questions here, and all of a sudden, when you see them building a hotel, a motel, whatever they're building next to you, it's because of these final maps. Now, do you hear anyone say anything about this? No. You'll only hear this, or when I speak about it, at various council districts. HollywoodHighlands.org for the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Let's prepare to vote on this. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, before I call on Joey B., Mr. Buscaino, let's move to item two. Do I have a Kevin Michael Key? Kevin Michael Key, item two, Kevin Michael Key.
Good morning, council members. I work for the United Coalition East Prevention Project. We do alcohol and other drug prevention in the downtown Skid Row area, and we are opposed to the granting of PC and N, Public Convenience and Necessity, with respect to this outlet due to the oversaturation and the other alcohol and other drug-related issues and nuisances that are consistent with oversaturation. We would ask that you deny the application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, on this item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
At this point, I'd like to give the floor to our dear friend and colleague, Mr. Joe Buscaino. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's great to declare the month of October Italian Heritage Month. Go ahead, guys.
So what did you say? Let's give it a round of applause. We're gonna declare this month. Let's go, yeah.
Allora. Oggi siamo tutti italiani. We are all Italian today, ladies and gentlemen, colleagues. And before we kick off our festivities, we are gonna begin the program with the singing of our national anthem. All rise, please stand. And now, to sing the Italian national anthem, help me welcome students from Franklin Magnet Elementary School.
Joe, you see how they look on the screen so they can see themselves?
Allora, siamo pronti? Quasi?
Ok. Non c'è la musica.
Okay, Ken.
Non c'è la musica. Ivan! Non c'è la musica. Seguire. Chiaro?
Siamo pronti? Musica? Non musica, va bene. Acappella. Okay, acappella. Here we go.
Fra...
Thank you. Wonderful. How beautiful. How beautiful was that, colleagues? Students from San Pedro of Italian descent singing the national anthem, and students from Franklin Magnet Elementary School, most who are not of Italian descent, singing the Italian national anthem. Was that beautiful, or what? Bravi! Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Of course, we think of Italy, we think of art, and music, and culture, and food, and the significant contributions Italians have made, not only to the city, but also to this country. I'd like to welcome Ms. Janet DeMay from Casa Italiana Opera House to kick off the festivities with a wonderful, wonderful opera song. Ms. DeMay? Thank you. Janet DeMay, thank you so much, Ms. DeMay. Appreciate you.
Allora, ancora una volta sono onorato di chi ha ricevuto questo mese il mese di eredità italiana americana. I'm proud again to declare this month Italian-American Heritage Month in the city of Los Angeles. Colleagues, each and every year, the President of the United States signs an executive order designating the month of October as National Italian Heritage Month, which recognizes the many achievements and contributions of Americans of Italian descent, as well as Italians in America. Over 5.4 million Italians immigrated to the United States from 1820 to 1992, and today, there are over 26 million Americans of Italian descent in the United States, making them the fifth-largest ethnic group. As is always stated in these John Ferraro Council chambers, as John Ferraro is smiling down upon us today, one of our greatest city strengths is its diversity, and that's why it's important that we not only remember our roots, but nourish and harness them. And during council recess this last week, I spent the week traveling the homeland where my parents migrated to, that's migrated from, that's Sicily. There, I spent time meeting with mayors of Sicilian cities, in Bagheria, Trappeto, Teresini, Chinisi, and San Vito Locapo, dignitaries and officials of the Port of Palermo, where we discussed our respective local policy issues, our respective solutions to those issues, and planned future collaborations, specifically working on establishing a friendship port relationship with the Port of Palermo. Through the California National League of Cities, where we share ideas on how to solve various problems, we can also share ideas from cities abroad, thus tapping into our historic and cultural roots to not only help us figure out where we come from, but also brainstorm on how to fix our problems and move forward using our history and roots. When we work with cities abroad, we foster international trade and therefore cataly... therefore take advantage of the economic activity, especially when we have the busiest port here of North America, the Port of Los Angeles. And this is why we declare October Italian Heritage Month in the city of Los Angeles. I've invited a number of key individuals here to speak, including our Consul General, who I will soon bring up, but the one individual that I want to recognize is my bride, of will be celebrating 15 years tomorrow, my wife, Jay Buscaino. And with all due respect, Mr. Corrects, she is my favorite karaoke partner today. Mr. Antonio Verdi, our Italian Consul General of Los Angeles, his jurisdiction, colleagues, includes Arizona, Nevada, New Mexico. Mr. Verdi's experience spans a diversity of sectors, including banking and publishing, and whose foreign... Public Foreign Services include assignments in Tokyo, Moscow, Australia, not to mention fields such as energy and environment and immigration. Here in Los Angeles, Mr. Antonio Verdi has dedicated his time and work to fostering strong relationships between the Italian Consul and other Italian... local Italian institutions, such as the Italian Trade Agency, the Italian Chamber of Commerce and Industry, the Italian Cultural Institute, and other key stakeholders, such as the Tourism Board. He is also committed to increasing Italian language and culture instruction at our local schools here in Los Angeles. And by having a strong emphasis on establishing and nourishing relationships between local Italian cultural and business organizations, and by introducing Italian cultural to our youth, we create economic activity between our city here and cities throughout Italy and the rest of the Mediterranean. And just like I told the mayors in Sicily, when we work together, we strengthen our strengths and minimize our weaknesses. With cultural and commercial relationships, we can grow together our respective industries. Help me welcome our Italian Consul General, Antonio Verdi.
Council members, ladies and gentlemen, the proclamation of October as Italian Heritage Month in Los Angeles is a well-deserved recognition of Americans of Italian descent and of their contribution to the growth and development of this great city since its earliest days. And we thank Councilman Buscaino for bringing this about, since it also allows the key influence Italian culture and lifestyle have historically exerted in this part of the world. Dedicated this month to the celebration of the cell... of the Italian heritage is extremely meaningful for the Italian and Italian-American communities, since it symbolizes the commitment of the city of Los Angeles to honoring their heritage, history, and culture. The proclamation also expresses the relationship of respect, friendship, and cooperation existing between Italy and Los Angeles. Forstering these ties is the primary mission of the Consulate General of Italy and all the Italian institutions in Los Angeles, from the Cultural Institute to the Trade Commission to the Italian Tourist Board to the American Chamber of Commerce. During this coming month, the greater Los Angeles will be home to a series of high-profile events to celebrate the role of Italian culture in the historical framework of this country's growth and development, and the uninterrupted flow of creativity that continues to characterize its cultures. For example, October 10, Beautiful Pico House, We Lost the Taste of Italy, and of course, Columbus Day Celebration are a precious opportunity to remember the role that Italians have played in making the city of Los Angeles the modern and open metropolis we know and love. And in neighboring Santa Monica, a month-long celebration showcasing the best of Italian culture, including fashion, food, art, and music called Ciao Italia, has just started. On the 17th, we'll bring you at broad stage a salute to Frank Sinatra, 500th birthday, hosted by Barbara Sinatra. I hope you will join us and look forward to see you there. Thank you very much for your attention and thank you very much for honoring Italy with this Heritage Month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Verdi. Grazie. Grazie mille. Colleagues, we will honor three individuals who have made significant contributions to the Italian-American community as it relates to preserving the Italian heritage culture here in the city of Los Angeles. Our first honoree is the Executive Director of the Italian American Museum of Los Angeles, also known as IMLA, a historian, an author, an advocate, a nonprofit leader, and a dear friend, Ms. Mariana Gatto. Can we bring her up, please?
I missed my second kiss.
Okay, it's okay. And Damiano. Damiano Vienni. Joining Ms. Gatto is her son, Damiano, Damien, and also the Board President of the Italian American Museum, Mr. Paul Pagnone. But colleagues and Mr. President, if I may, before I continue reading Mariana's bio and achievements, I can think of no better way to show our appreciation to her and the entire Board and the efforts made by preserving and putting together this incredible Italian museum by taking up item number 27 on today's agenda, which we know Mariana has worked tirelessly on for many, many months. If we can take item 27.
Item 27 is now before us.
Colleagues, item 27 is an Arts and Parks River Committee report. Thank you for your leadership, Mr. O'Farrell, for hearing this in your committee, and also to Mr. Weezer, whose district includes the Italian Museum. Thank you for your commitment, Mr. Weezer, for embracing and supporting the Italian American Museum, the Italian Hall. This item before us recommending the approval of a 10-year lease agreement with the Italian American Museum of Los Angeles with three 10-year renewal options for space at the Italian Hall Building in El Pueblo. Over $2 million has already been raised and expended by the nonprofit Historic Italian Hall Federation for the renovation, improvements, and maintenance of the museum and the Italian Hall Building. And they have committed to raising an additional $500,000 in the initial 10-year period and $500,000 during each renewal option period for improvements, exhibits, and artifacts. I also like to recognize, from the El Pueblo Commissioner, Commissioner Sal Di Costanzo, who is here, who is actually videotaping. Thank you, Commissioner. And of course, our General Manager, Chris Espinosa. Thank you, Mr. Espinosa, for your leadership. So colleagues, I ask that we support item 27 before us. I ask for an eye vote.
Okay, Mr. Sadio.
I rise, obviously, to support this. There is incredible leadership, Mariana Gatto, because the most appropriate person that you could select to be honored on this. You mentioned that there were $2 million raised and spent, and I want to give credit to the great, with all due respect to Mr. Ferraro, the great Italian of the city, Joe Sorrell. You remember this, Mr. Speaker. Joe Sorrell was a frequent visitor of the Assembly and had heard of our efforts to fund the Chinese museum. And we had the legislation ready to go to fund the Chinese museum. We're going to give them $1 million. And so Joe Sorrell, in his great skill of lobbying and his humble way, comes up, much like you, with his hands crossed like that, his head down, and said, "You know, I hear you're giving $1 million to the Chinese museum." And I said, "Yes, Joe, we worked very hard. We're very excited about that." And he says, "You know, gee, I wish you could give $1 million to the Italian museum. You know, we've got all this work to do, and we've got to restore it and protect it." And I said, "Well, Joe, that's great, but you know, it's kind of late in the session, and we're at the end, and it's, you know, we really want to move this." And he said, "Well, gee, you know, I really would appreciate it if you could do this." So in his humble way, as Joe was, we gave it a shot. And so we put another $1 million in the proposal, and we called it the Marco Polo. And we said, "Only in America, and only in downtown Los Angeles, and only at El Pueblo could we unite all these communities together. And could we have legislation that talked about how the Italians went to China, or Basta came from, and then how they all ended up in downtown Los Angeles? All that is part of the rich history. It's the precursor, the historical precursor for these communities coming together. And you're right, Mr. Buscaino, diversity is our strength. And there's no place more emblematic of that diversity than El Pueblo. And so it's so appropriate for you to honor Ms. Gatto for her incredible leadership and the Italian Hall and its leadership. So congratulations. And, Mr. President, I speak in honor of the motion, in favor of the motion.
And you passed it.
Okay, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. What a great presentation, Mr. Buscaino. We know that how incredibly important it is for you to talk about your Italian roots. And it's great to see that now, with an Italian-American here in council once again, we continue to fulfill these chambers with Italians from all walks of life. But to have you feel that pride and joy of being an Italian, we couldn't have a better representative on this council than you, Mr. Buscaino. And Ms. Gatto, congratulations to you. You know, you, along with Mr. Pagnone and the Board at the Italian American Hall, have single-handedly brought back a project that many people thought would not happen. When I first got elected in 2005, I heard about how the old dilapidated museum was just sitting there, rotting away, and not only not fulfilling its promise about bringing back and talking to people about the heritage of Italians in Los Angeles, but the history of Los Angeles itself and people who built this great city. So congratulations to you. Wonderful, wonderful recognition. And I recall back in budget and finance, we were able to allocate about $2 million to start the effort. It's great to see that it continues through fundraising efforts. That was the idea all along, that if the city put some money in to start the capital improvements, that the private sector would step up and continue the project, and we were able to do that. So congratulations to you, to all your Board. Wonderful, wonderful job. Congratulations.
Mr. Ru.
My brother from another mother. You know, thank you so much for today.
We're all related. We're all related, right?
Thank you so much for such a wonderful presentation today, and it just livened up the mood here at City Hall. And I see your parents there, and I went to go say hi, and I was afraid they were going to take me to the side and offer me some beverages.
Lemoncello, right?
Yeah. And, but you know, as an immigrant, you know, it's so great when we share the diversity in our cultures and our roots. You know, Los Angeles is made up of immigrants. The United States is made up of immigrants, and it's about sharing and learning from each other. And, you know, not only do we have numerous links, we also have another. I have the fortunate opportunity to continue the legacy of Councilmember John Ferraro. And I take that to heart. And we're in a strictly linked. And thank you so much for this presentation today. And thank you, and congratulations to the Italian-American community.
Back to you, Mr. Buscaino.
Fantastic. If we can take item 27 again, I ask for an eye vote and hoping to get unanimous approval of this item before us.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 15 eyes, that is approved. Fourth with Mr. Buscaino.
Yes, sir, thank you. How appropriate. Mariana Gatto's grandparents fled from poverty and social inequality in Calabria and Sicily in the early part of the 20th century. Her grandfather was a steelworker and laborer, and her grandmother was a sweatshop worker. They settled in Lincoln Heights, which at the time was Los Angeles's little Italy. Mariana's father, God rest his soul, Joseph Gatto, taught her the importance of education and appreciation of her Italian roots. Mariana's lived in Los Angeles all her life, born and raised in the Silver Lake and Los Feliz area. She attended UCLA, Cal State LA, and graduated magna cum laude in social science and history. She then got her teaching credential and secondary education into master's in history. She turned down the opportunity to teach at an exclusive private school to teach students in Skid Row. She's also served as a curator of history and education for the city of Los Angeles and has produced many acclaimed exhibitions, including the one we brought down to San Pedro. Sunshine, struggle to sunshine. Sunshine to struggle, I remember that. And that's where she met her husband. I take credit for that. Mariana is responsible for over $1 million of allocation of city funding and over $1 million privately raised for the Italian American Museum project. She has drastically enhanced the museum's collection and created its signature annual event, The Taste of Italy, this Saturday. I know, Mr. O'Farrell, we'll see you there. Hoping you all can join us. Mariana Gatto enhances the knowledge of Italian history through community involvement and through her research publications. Help me honor Mariana Gatto as one of this year's Italian Heritage Month honorees.
Thank you and good morning. Essentially, what I'm being recognized this morning for is doing what I love. And that's a very great feeling, memorializing the lives of others. So thank you, Councilmember Buscaino, for this recognition. I'd also like to acknowledge my son, Damien, who, for the past 21 years of his life, has inspired me to be a better person. And I'd like to dedicate this award to my grandparents, who faced pretty awful treatment in this country when they first arrived, like many immigrants, past and present. But their struggles made my life, our lives, possible. And that's pretty much it. We're so happy to work with you on the museum project and bring the multilayered history of our city to the masses. The museum is not simply for or about Italian-Americans, but really a loving tribute to our region's diverse roots. So thank you so much.
Okay, Trainee family, come on up. Thank you. Congratulations. The Trainee family, amazing family with us today from San Pedro. Classic Italian-American immigrant success story. Filippo Trainee arrived at Ellis Island on August 25, 1913, at the age of 18. Fantastic. From the Italian central coast island of Ischia, which is our sister city in Italy. He farmed and fished for years until he was able to open up the iconic and legendary Majestic Cafe in 1925, where he fed everyone from dock workers to celebrities. The restaurant became a family heirloom when, in 1937, Filippo Trainee's son joined him in operating the restaurant. After the original Majestic closed in 1989, son Jim Trainee opened J. Trainee's in San Pedro, and among its regulars was Tommy Lasorda. Dustin Trainee, a fixture at J. Trainee's since the age of six, influenced by his grandfather Jim Trainee Senior and his father Jim Trainee Junior, started cooking at an early age by learning the family's secret recipe. Dustin also studied in the Italian truffle region, trained by the Oriental Hotel in Bangkok, Thailand, and was a chef at the People's Cafe in Zagreb, Croatia. He is now an award-winning chef here in Los Angeles. Phil Trainee Junior, son of Filippo, also has a great location in Long Beach, which has been there now for 25 years. The restaurant has hosted numerous professional athletes, coaches, sports writers, including Tommy Lasorda, Jerry West, John Wooden, Bill Sherman, and Mark Sanchez, among others. This year, J. Trainee's Restaurant in San Pedro celebrated its 90th year. Help me welcome and introduce and acknowledge the Trainee family. And joining us, the newest generation of the Trainee family, Rocco Trainee. Love that kid. Look at him. Okay, want to say a few words? Good to see you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for having us here today. On behalf of the entire Trainee family, we would love to thank the city of San Pedro, the city of Long Beach, and the entire county for embracing our family and allowing us to live the American dream. Thank you very much.
And last, but most definitely not least, we have with us today Mr. David Di Cristofaro, who is Executive Vice President and Lead Region President for Wells Fargo Bank, overseeing 268 stores and more than 5,000 team members, and serves customers across Los Angeles, San Bernardino, Riverside Counties, throughout the Coachella Valley. Before entering and climbing the ladder in the baking industry, Mr. Di Cristofaro grew up in the Bronx of New York City, where he attended predominantly Italian school, St. Teresa Elementary School. His father migrated to North America in 1958 in the region of Molise. His mother migrated from the Avellino Province in the Campania region. Mr. Di Cristofaro contributes to the culture and community of the LA region by serving as Board Chair of the Pasadena Playhouse, Vice Chairman of the American Red Cross of Greater LA, and also is a huge supporter of the Italian American Museum of Los Angeles. Help me recognize Mr. David Di Cristofaro. Okay. Make sure you tag me on this. All right, Eliana, won't we hold it for him? Do you want to say a few words?
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. So first of all, thank you to President Wesson, the City Council, and especially Councilman Buscaino for this tremendous recognition. To be honored as an Italian of distinction in Los Angeles is so very special to me. As the son of immigrant Italians, I can't express how incredibly meaningful it is to be recognized today. I'm so appreciative of this honor. Also want to thank and acknowledge our fellow honorees today, Mariana Gatto. Congratulations. Thanks for everything you do, and looking forward to Taste of Italy on Saturday, as well as the Trainee family for all of the great work you do in bringing delicious Italian cuisine to Southern California for so long. Also want to thank and acknowledge my friends and family that are here today. So thank you all for being here. I also want to take a moment to especially thank my parents, my family. They could not be here today. They're back in New York. I can tell you, it was incredibly painful for my mom to not be here, but unfortunately, she could not make it. Now, my good friend and colleague, who I think many of you know, Jonathan Weedman, he likes to say, "There are two types of people in the world: those who are Italian and those who want to be Italian." Yes, and boy, is he right. I just returned from my first trip this past September to Italy, and this joke has renewed meaning for me. I had the opportunity to visit Amalfi, Rome, Tuscany, Florence, amazing cities with incredible food, incredible sights to see. I was just blown away by how incredible it was. The people and the culture were even more vibrant than I expected. But without question, the visit to my parents' towns was the most important and impactful, memorable part of the trip. My father is originally from a very small town of fewer than 300 people called San d'Assenno, a small city outside of Cambobass in the region of Molise. My mother is from another very small part of Italy called Cerrenadia in an area called, a city called Avellino in the province of Campania. Strolling through their hometowns and witnessing their tiny gray, stone-dilapidated structures where they grew up, they had a pigpen next door, seeing the fields where my grandfather would tend the sheep in the morning and throughout the day, I could not help but develop a renewed appreciation for the journey that they started in 1958 that took them from their small Italian towns to new... proud to say that Wells Fargo has been named the top corporate philanthropist for the last 10 years by the L.A. Business Journal, and annually, our team members give volunteer more than 30,000 hours of community service each year. At Wells Fargo, we know we can only be as strong as the strength of our community, and today, I humbly and gratefully accept this wonderful award on behalf of our amazing community, my caring company, my courageous family, and the many daring immigrants who came to this country in search of greater opportunities here. Thank you, thank you so much.
Colleagues, I'd like to introduce our very own Italian-American here in the city family, our very own LAPD Captain in Mr. Wesson's district, Captain Vito Palazzolo Di Teresini. Also, Councilwoman Nuri Martinez, Chief of Staff. I love the red, white, the Italian band there representing. Chief of Staff, Channel 35, we got to get a shot of that, Mr. Jim Dantona. There you go, stay foot, stay foot. There he is. Really proud. We can't forget also an Italian-American, my colleague, Mike Bonin. Did you know that his mom, Beth Constantino, is Italian as well? Mike, please stand and take a bow representing the Italian-American community. Your mom's not here, she is here in spirit.
Missing the Italian Fest this weekend because I will be back on the East Coast with her eating, sorry folks, the best meatballs and tomato sauce in the world.
All right. Also, let's be reminded that Mayor Garcetti's great-grandparents immigrated from Italy to Mexico, and I believe he may be joining us a little bit later. In addition, I'd like to recognize Florendino Blastolino, who is our Trade Commissioner. Thank you so much for joining us, looking forward to working with you to establish better relationships between our respective countries as it relates to trade and commerce and science and technology. We're going to do great work in the year ahead. Also, a number of Italian organizations joining us here, Federated Italo-Americans of Southern California, the Trappetto Club of San Pedro, the National Italian-American Foundation, Italian-American Museum of Los Angeles, the Italy-America Chamber of Commerce, the Feast of San Gennaro, the Italian-American Club of San Pedro, Casa Italiana Opera House, the Sister City of Ischia Foundation, the Italian Catholic Federated Branch 115. And we'd like to close, colleagues, this year's Italian Heritage Month Council presentation with the performance of students from the San Pedro area.
If I may.
Yes.
If I just may interrupt for a second for two quick things. I do want to acknowledge a former Assemblyman and a friend of many of us here, former Assemblyman Anthony Portantino. We should give him a round of applause. And I know, I think I shared this story with you, Mr. Buscaino, but I feel compelled to share it again. I went to a Catholic high school in Cleveland, Ohio, at a time when there were serious problems where, well, there were racial issues, very similar to a lot of the racial issues that we have in some parts of the country today. For the first two, two and a half weeks that I went to school at 5'5", 105 pounds, I got jumped on and beat up every day.
Wow.
Every day, to the point where it was so bad that one of my buddy's fathers owned a barber shop. He gave me a straight razor to take to school, because I was not going to get beaten again. And as I was going home, again, I was surrounded by a group of guys that were going to beat me up. I reached in my pocket because I was not going to just, I fought every time, but this time, I was just not going to go down without really injuring somebody. And then, like in a movie, there was a voice that came from nowhere indicating that from this moment on, that Herb Wesson was an honorary son of Italy.
All right.
No, and that if you mess with him, you mess with us. And I never, ever, ever had a problem.
Let that be true today. If you mess with Herb, you mess with us.
Well, but what it was, it just showed a group of guys that thought it was stupid, and we became friends, and I just want to know that I don't know where my life would have been if it weren't for them coming in and at that point in time. I surely may not be sitting before you today. So, I do feel like I'm an honorary son.
Yes, sir, you are.
And I think this is a great day, and I think we should give another round of applause for a group of people that helped shape this country.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. And before, as the kids are setting up, I do want to recognize my mom and dad are here, my sister, my mother-in-law, my brother-in-law, sister-in-law, my aunts and uncles and cousins.
Give him a round of applause.
It's a family affair here. We love you.
Love you guys.
Okay, this is our closing song. And you know it, sing along, Mr. Kretzif, if you know it.
[Singing] In Napoli, where love is king. When boy meets girl, here's what they say.
Go, Gia.
When the moon hits your heart, I like a big pizza pie that's a morning. When the world seems to shine like you've had too much wine, that's a morning. Bells will ring, ting-a-ling-a-ling, ting-a-ling-a-ling, and you'll sing "Vita bella." Hearts will play, tippy-tippy-tay, tippy-tippy-tay, like a gay town in Tella. When the stars make you drool, just like pasta fazool, that's a morning. When you dance down the street with a cloud at your feet, you're in love. When you walk in a dream, but you know you're not dreaming, signore. You swoon at me, but you see that you're not only that's a morning. When the moon hits your heart, I like a big pizza pie that's a morning. When the world seems to shine like you've had too much wine, that's a morning. Bells will ring, ting-a-ling-a-ling, ting-a-ling-a-ling, and you'll sing "Vita bella." Hearts will play, tippy-tippy-tay, tippy-tippy-tay, like a gay town in Tella, lucky Tella. When the stars make you drool, just like pasta fazool, that's a morning. When you dance down the street with a cloud at your feet, you're in love. When you walk in a dream, but you know you're not dreaming, signore. You swoon at me, but you see that you're not only that's a morning.
Let's hear it for Rich Deanna, true, out of Chicago, but has San Pedro in his heart. Thank you, Rich, we love you. He is San Pedro's Billy Joe, right, Jay? So, don't forget, this Saturday, Taste of Italy, and our Buscaino Block Party Spaghetti Dinner on Sunday, October 11th, at Waymouth Corners, noon to four. Colleagues, you've all been invited. Please bring your friends and family. Free event on Sunday in San Pedro. Thank you so much, a number of individuals that helped put today's event together and some program going on throughout the month in the entire region. Ann Patenza, Marcella Tyler, Emanuele Banabianco, Frankie Capitelli, Joseph Inshamataro, Mariana Gatto, Hector Garcia of Farmer John's, Paul Galetti of Southwind Foods, Janet Demme, Rich Deanna, of course, Antonella Hartel Ventura, students at Franklin, Umberto Bonfante for the espresso, and Dustin Trainee from Dona. Thank you so much, God bless you, and thank you for joining us. There's a lunch reception, everyone's invited at the forecourt. Everyone's invited at the lunch reception following the presentation. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, well done, Mr. Buscaino, and congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll go to item one at this point. So, as people are exiting the chambers, if I could have Corey Sims begin to work his way down to the podium. Corey, we're on item one.
In fact, it's my understanding, one G has been continued. Are we certain, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President, item one G has been continued to October 20th.
Okay.
If we could have some silence, we still have business.
Mr. Gutierrez?
Yes, my name is Arnold Gutierrez. It's been continued for four weeks, I believe.
Yes, I was going to officially make that. So, anyway, it will be continued for four weeks. Madam Clerk, that will bring us to what exact date?
November 10th.
So, it will be continued to November 10th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And also, Mr. President, there's been a request to continue items one A to November 10th, and items one A.C. to October 20th.
Okay, without objection. Gregory Thompson, please come down, sir, to the center aisle.
Oh, yeah, my name is Gregory Thompson, and I was summoned here today to answer the summons that it was glued onto my house. One afternoon, I came in, I'm the owner of 1500 East 20th Street, and I do reside there. And I have been working with the Historical Society about the property. The property is over 150 years old, and there's some African-American history, some significant history that belongs to that property. In the late 1800s, my grandfather came, my grandfather's father came here and opened and bought that property, building and working on the railroad, and he had a feed store out of the property, and he did it later on, he turned it into the first African-American Baptist church here in Los Angeles. So, we've been researching the property to find out, so far, we found out that Amy McPherson was, used to come there and do some preaching. So, they're looking into it to find out exactly the significance of what the property is all about, and so, that's the reason why, you know, I fisted it up and just did what I done.
Well, it's my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we're going to receive and file this, this has been deemed owner-occupied, so he's primarily getting what he, or he's getting what he is requesting. Am I accurate on that?
Yeah, that's absolutely right. This property is owner-occupied. We talked to the property owner, he came to the office, he gave us the documentation that's required, so we requested that this item gets received and filed. I think it's item one, one I, so we recommend that it gets received and filed because it's owner-occupied.
Fine. Okay, so I think you're good, sir.
Okay.
And if you need to have further conversation, you can have it with the man in the red and black vest, but I think that you got the kind of action that you had hoped you would get when you came here this morning.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a... Ruhi? I remember this name. Wingan, Wingran, Winggon, Ruhi? And Benjamin F. Shani or something like that? Benjamin F. Sony Shani.
And, Mr. President, as she's coming, there's also a request to continue item one S to October 20th.
Okay, without objection, that'd be the order. Yes, ma'am?
So, it has been postponed, sir?
Yes, it's my understanding, it's been continued till when? October, October 20th.
Sir, is it possible to?
One S.
Change it to 20th, I have a medical eye appointment.
Why don't we make it the, what date is the 20, is that okay with you? The 27th? What, is that fall on the right day, the 27th?
Yes, that's three weeks from today.
So, why don't we do that? We'll continue it to the 27th of this month.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. And Benjamin's gone. Benjamin, okay, let us prepare to vote. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That brings us... Mr. Kokorian, I think we're on item three. Are we finished with that? I thought you held item three.
Yes, I did. I have a few questions for planning staff, please.
Yes, I did. I have a few questions for planning staff, please.
So on item three, if we could get the appropriate, there, there she is.
Good morning, council members.
You wanna start with Mr. Weezer, or you wanna just start this?
No, it's fine.
I can't hear you.
Afterwards.
Okay, so...
I can speak second, thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Kukorian, it would be appropriate for you to ask your questions at this time?
Okay, well, if I could ask, before I get to my questions, maybe you could briefly state what the proposed ordinance would do so that we can set up the context for the discussion.
Sure, happy to. Patricia Diefendorf for Planning Department Staff. So this ordinance is a new ordinance that would be an amendment to the zoning code to create a zone that would allow for the regulation of a mix of uses in industrial areas that would include industrial, commercial, and live-work uses. That's basically what it does.
Okay, so, members, the reason I wanted to have a discussion about this ordinance is, while there are certainly places in Los Angeles, like in Mr. Weezer's district, where we've done an incredible job of taking old and underutilized industrial and commercial space and turning it into outstanding residential and retail developments, we have to look at the fact that Los Angeles has the smallest amount of available manufacturing land of any big city in America. We have one of the highest occupancy rates of our manufacturing space of any state, of any city in America. And manufacturing jobs provide almost 10% of the county's employment. Los Angeles County is the number-one manufacturing center in the country, and business groups continue to tell us that one of the great challenges for job creation in the Los Angeles area is that there's inadequate amount of manufacturing, available manufacturing land. There's an inadequate amount of land available to invest in, in the kind of ongoing job-creating business investments that manufacturing represents. So I would say that my first concern is what this does, what this has the potential of doing to our overall manufacturing stock of land, of available land, number one. And number two, I'd like you to speak, if you would, please, to whether this could have the impact of moving large and dirty industrial businesses to the places like the San Fernando Valley, where those uses are currently now focused and concentrated. One of the challenges we're having in the San Fernando Valley is trying to lessen the impact of waste disposal and other auto-dismantling and some of the other large industrial, dirty industrial uses. If we're taking manufacturing land away in some areas, doesn't that force manufacturing to go into the remaining areas like the valley where we're already disproportionately impacted? Second, if you have a zone that was historically manufacturing, and then one of these hybrid zones is overlaid on that, or it's replaced with one of these hybrid zones, the existing manufacturing uses presumably would continue to be grandfathered. But what would happen if those existing uses wanted to invest, to expand, to change, or update their use? Would it have the impact of creating a legal non-conforming use, for example, if there's residential now developed within 500 feet of those uses? And how will we address those challenges? One additional point is the impact on affordability of housing. If our goal is to increase the housing stock in the city, which I think all of us realize must be an important priority for this city, the ordinance as it's presented does not really do much to add to affordability. In fact, it includes greater bonuses than are available under our current density bonus ordinance under section, under AB 1818, SB 1818. So it seems to me this has kind of the, an adverse impact on affordability of housing rather than a beneficial impact. So those are a few of my questions that I, issues that I'd like you to address, and then I think some of these can be addressed, but they don't appear to be in the current ordinance, and I'd like to discuss with you some options for how we might be able to achieve the goal that this is intended to achieve while eliminating some of those potential adverse impacts that I've described. So can you raise, have a little bit of a discussion with us about some of the points that I've raised, and whether those have been considered, and what the potential risks there are?
Okay, happy to do that. Again, Patricia Diefendorf for the record. So you had asked the question about what the potential of this ordinance, what the potential impact this ordinance has on our overall manufacturing land. And I would say that it's been pretty clear in the ordinance and in the staff report, we've tried to put some definition on when this use of this zone is, when you'd be eligible for use of this zone. And we're trying, the characteristics of areas that are hybrid industrial are pretty unique. They're not found everywhere. We've been very explicit about the fact that this zone would not be suitable for many areas, industrial areas of the city. It's more suited to places where you have, you've perhaps had a stock of buildings, industrial buildings, that lent themselves to adaptive reuse, and therefore you have some live-work units and kind of a residential base in those areas already. It's definitely more geared to places where you, that are transit-served, so where you already have like a diverse of, mix of uses. So the idea is not to have this be, like, every industrial area be converted to this zone. It's really tailored for some very specific uses. And I think it's also important to say, when you asked me what this zone was intended to regulate, we, the zone is not trying to create new conventional housing. The zone is trying to, it's established a new use, a live-work use, and these units would not, would be very different from conventional housing in the sense that they would be built to a certain standard. There's a new building code section, section 419, that allows for a mixing of live and work uses within a unit, and there's some very stringent standards, more commercial standards, that these units would have to comply with. So the idea is to create units that can house five employees, a maximum of five employees, because that's what this new building code ordinance does, and also to create spaces that are flexible and adaptable over time. These spaces could be used solely for business if someone who owned the space or rented the space chose to do so because of the way they would be constructed. So I just wanted to make that point. And given the way, the nature, the way that people are working, the nature of the way they work, it's changing. They wanna live and work in the same place. This does have an opportunity to sort of expand the range of options for small businesses. So you also asked about the impact that it might have on keeping, having very few options for where heavy industrial could be located if many industrial areas were rezoned and re-designated to this industrial zone. First, I think it's important to point out that it will require, we're not rezoning as a part of this ordinance any properties currently. It would require the city council to adopt a plan amendment and approve a zone change. So every request would be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. But again, as I mentioned in sort of answer to the first question, this is really supposed to have limited applicability. The idea is that this would not be suitable for many industrial areas, and there's really just a limited handful of industrial areas where it would be well-suited. And this actually is consistent with the 2007 Industrial Land Use Policy Study, which identified discreet industrial areas where this kind of industrial mixed-use environment exists today, and incorporating a mix of uses, including live-work, would be appropriate. So your third question was, trying to, sorry, would we be making any uses non-conforming by introducing, if any property was zoned to this zone? Again, that would have to go through a process that would involve city council approval. But given the areas that I described, the kind of unique characteristics that would be, need to be found in areas that would be suitable for this zone, it's largely areas where there really probably isn't the kind of heavy industry that, you know, existing any longer. The heavy industry has been sort of priced out of some of these areas. So, I mean, obviously, it would not be a goal of ours to try to make any uses non-conforming as a result of this ordinance, and that could be something that we would look at as we're all evaluating any individual requests to use this zone. And then your final question, I think, was about the impact on affordability or affordable housing. The ordinance actually does have an affordable housing provision. This is a very unique ordinance. It's structured, it's kind of like a tiered zoning system that has been established in the ordinance. And once you introduce the live-work zone above one and a half to one FAR, which is the allowable FAR in most industrial areas today, you do have to provide an affordable component. And the affordability, the percentages of affordability required match the state density bonus ordinance. And I think you mentioned that the bonuses are a little bit more generous than would be required in the, from the state density bonus ordinance. But the reason that that is the case is because affordability is only one public benefit that this ordinance is requiring. So the, building out the live-work units to that more stringent commercial standard is also viewed from a policy perspective as a public benefit. And there's also other requirements, open space requirements, pedestrian paseo requirements. There's a number of other requirements that collectively place, you know, costs on development, and we're trying to help development be able to offset the cost for that whole package of public benefits, not just the affordable housing. So I hope that answers most of your questions.
Okay, so if, if this is essentially enabling an ordinance that gives the council an option for future consideration of zoning changes in particular areas to this, then wouldn't it be appropriate to include in this a requirement that when the council does make zoning changes, they make findings to the effect that, for example, the new use will not adversely impact jobs that would otherwise be created by the highest and best use of the property? That there is not a current or past public health, adverse impact on public health in that area that would be harmful to residents who move into a residential area there? Perhaps a finding that changing a zone in a particular area does not adversely impact other areas of the city by displacing industry into other areas. I get that you're saying that in the sort of targeted areas that are anticipated to be used, that this is to be used, all of those things would, we would be able to easily make those findings. But unfortunately, that's not anything that's required, and this is an ordinance that would apply citywide. So could we have a requirement of such findings like that in the ordinance?
Patricia Diefendorf for Planning Department Staff, for the record. We can certainly look into that approach. We can, I think, through the form and legality process, we can look and see if there are other provisions that we can add to the ordinance that would help address some of the concerns that you have.
I think it's important that we look at those things and have those options before the council. You know, we're looking at a comprehensive job creation strategy for this city right now. One of the single biggest impediments to job creation that the city faces is our manufacturing zones not being adequate. And I think that we at least ought to, if we're going to do this for old industrial zones that are no longer being used for those purposes, as you point out, and they're not suitable for manufacturing now, fine. But if this is gonna have the impact on reducing the availability of land that could otherwise be used by job-creating businesses, I would not be supportive of something that, you know, allows someone to cash out on a development that displaces current and future job-creating opportunities. So if we could include those when the ordinance comes back, or those sorts of options, that would be helpful, if that's acceptable to Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Madam President. And first I want to thank the Planning Department for their hard work on this ordinance. It's been two years in the making, and it's gone through several variations. The latest in which is that this started as a discussion in the Arts District in downtown Los Angeles, where there was such a demand to convert some industrially-zoned properties into residential and commercial and other uses, given the transformation of that area. So there was an effort to try to control that huge demand in such a way that will put out for us in the front, what are the priorities for this city, and what are the parameters should we engage in a discussion to rezone that property? Because right now, that demand is there such that if we do engage to rezone property, this type of discussion would happen. We would say, well, look, we prioritize and we value affordable housing. We value the creation of jobs. We value keeping the characteristic of that neighborhood. So why don't we take that all, put it in an ordinance, so when a developer comes to us and says, "Look, I'm interested in rezoning this land, this industrial zone land," we say, "Well, there's this hybrid industrial ordinance that you could take advantage of that lays out what our priorities are," instead of trying to negotiate each and every one and slowing down or even putting this in a better, in a framework for us. So that's really what I think we set out to do. But once that was being discussed, the Planning Department said it's best just to put this out throughout the city because they're seeing this type of demand in other areas as well. And so it then went through the City Planning Commission, and the Planning and Land Use and Management Committee discussed this on various times. And what I think we have is something that will allow us to continue to take underutilized land. Now, I understand the concern we have as a city that we shouldn't do this on areas where we would possibly take away the creation, areas that we have creation of jobs. This is, I think, for that, that question has been answered for us already. Once we start making use of the ordinance, we have determined through the negotiation process, through discussions, through community stakeholder meetings, that this, any possibility of using this will, we've already answered that question that it's not gonna negatively impact jobs. But in fact, what we do, what we are doing is some requirements that they create some live-work space if they create any residential area. And this ordinance, just like any other ordinance or any other planning approval, will have to go through the regular process of SEQA review, of zoning administrative hearings, et cetera, et cetera. So those discussions will take place. But I think it's a good thing, in terms of what Mr. Kukorian has brought up, to put that up front in the findings that we should have that, just to make it crystal clear. That would come out anyway. That's the intention of the ordinance, is that we would only do this in those areas that are underutilized, that we have determined that no future jobs would take place. But I think it's good to put that in there just to make sure upfront. But at the end of the day, I think that this will allow us to make use of properties that have been sitting vacant for decades, where the old haystacks and types of manufacturing that we used in the past, that those old buildings are no longer able to be utilized for any use, and they're just sitting there empty, not providing any jobs that this live-work ordinance will provide because of the live-work requirements, not providing any necessary housing. And as we all heard, we need to create more affordable housing. So I think at the end of the day, this is the right way to move, but at the same time, do it in a very methodical way and responsible and slow way. We've asked the Planning Department to come back with a report to our Planning Committee each year as to what we see is, as a result of this ordinance, and is it achieving the types of goals we have set out for us. So we have that, that report that we expect from the Planning Department each, each year to let us know which direction we're going. So the findings on, that Mr. Kukorian have set out, I think they're good. They would be evaluated under SEQA, other things, but I think to set them out up front, it's a good thing just to be clear about that. And colleagues, I would ask for your aye vote on this. This is simply to go out and ask the city attorney to do the form and legality come back to us, and we will look at the final form once that comes back to us as well. So thank you. I ask for an aye vote.
Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you very much, Madam President. So then I would ask that when the ordinance does come back for our consideration, that that come back also with a report on potential, the legality of, let's see, how should we... phrase the report? A report including options for the council to consider regarding findings that there are no public health impacts in the HI zone with regard to existing and historic industrial uses in the area that could cause a health risk to future residents? That there be an economic finding that the industrial land in the area was no longer viable and necessary for manufacturing use? And a finding that the relocation, that there would not be a potential for relocation of potential heavy industry uses to other parts of the city that would be adverse to those other parts of the city?
Okay.
So if I could ask for that report back with the ordinance, so that we could consider those options then, that'd be fun. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gakkorion. There are no more speakers on this item. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes. And it's adopted as amended.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, I would like to reconsider an item from our agenda on September 22nd. Council File 15-0160-S403. I'd like the item to be continued for four weeks.
So Madam President, since all items went forthwith on September 22nd, first, council should vote to suspend the rules.
Okay, let's do that. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Now council votes on reconsideration.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Thank you.
And just for the record, that item is continued to November 10th?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move on to public comment. First speaker, Sean.
Yes, good morning, Sean, CD2. Let's keep, let's keep, you know, the rains are coming. Keep the storm, clean up the storm drains and rain gutters in all apartment and housings. Please clean up your gutters, the rain's coming, it's not a joke. Starbucks is being built on Burbank and Laurel Canyon. We're excited about it. Yeah, Hyatt Surprise is being built real fast. Yeah. The crosswalk on St. Charles Bar Mello is still faded. The cars are not stopping. We need to do something about that.
Thank you, Sean. Next speaker, Harrison Hill.
Hi, good morning. Oh, hello? Hey, good morning, my name is Harrison Hill. I'm coming out of Venice, and I wanted to speak today about the bicycles, the skateboards, and the scooters on the sidewalk. I think it's a problem. A buddy of mine, he's like 61 years old, and we were going for a walk yesterday, skateboard came from behind, bike came from the front, and he almost got injured. I got a bad ankle. And I don't think it's right that pedestrians on the sidewalk have to maneuver around vehicles like that. I think they should take it on the road. Mothers with strollers, I completely understand. But if you're talking about skateboards and stuff, I think that's got to be on the street. And I have issue with that, and I'd like to see something done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, John Walsh.
Saturday night, a man was standing on the corner in Van Nuys. He was shot to death by the police. The police claim that he threw a beer bottle through their back window, and they thought it was a gunshot. A gunshot? A beer bottle? That's ridiculous. They jumped out of their car and they shot the man dead. That was Saturday. Three days later, they refused to release any information concerning the murdered victim. Was he black? And I'm telling you right now, black people are not welcome in the valley. And if you try anything in the valley, they're going to shoot first and ask questions later. If this guy was a white guy, they would have announced it two days ago. Blacks, stay out of the valley.
Next speaker, Eduardo Martinez.
And Madam President, the speakers should be reminded not to yell into the microphones.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Eduardo Martinez, I work for ASF, that's A.S.C.A.R. Foundation. And I'm here to remind our council president that the majority of the health commissioners have been appointed. Why hasn't been a meeting, been the first meeting taking place? The Health Commission was adopted by the city council. It could have been on the ballot, so why is the city council taking such a long time in order to take the first meeting of the Health Commissioner? There are health crisis issues that we face in an ally city, and yet has been more than a year since the city voted for the Health Commission, and it seems that it is going to take another year before all the commissioners make their appointments. As of right now, Bob Bloomingfeld from this district has not named no one to the commission. Mr. Price, you are my representative, I think he left.
Thank you very much, sir.
Hasn't named anybody else? So please.
Thank you, your time is up. Thank you. The next speaker is Shai Dewitt McComan, I hope I have that correct. Followed by Guillermo Fregoso. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, President and Council. My name is Shai McConan. I'm 29 years old and a longtime resident of Los Angeles County. I'm tremendously concerned with the health crisis within the city. As advocates, we have been here many times. Thus every time, the council states that there will be a setup of a Health Commission, and yet a month goes by and there still isn't one in place. So I believe if the council is not going to act on this matter, my suggestion is that maybe it should go to the voters. I do want to thank the council for taking the time and hearing this concern, yet I do want to express that they should take action with urgency. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Arturo Arias. I'm sorry, Guillermo Fregoso, followed by Arturo Arias.
Is somebody available to translate me?
Sure.
Please.
Is our translator here?
Buenos dias, members of the Consilio de la Ciudad de Los Angeles.
Good morning, members of the City of Los Angeles.
Mi nombre es Guillermo Fregoso.
My name is Guillermo Fregoso.
Y soy residente del condado de Los Angeles por 35 años.
I'm a resident of the county of Los Angeles for 35 years.
Soy un paciente diagnosticado con SIDA hace 23 años.
I am a patient that has been diagnosed with AIDS for 35 years.
Y sé de la importancia de esta comisión de salud en el condado, aquí en el condado de Los Angeles.
And I know the importance of the, of this Health Committee in the City of Los Angeles.
Para que empiece a trabajar lo más pronto posible.
So they can start working as soon as possible.
Para el bien de todos los residentes del condado de Los Angeles.
For the well-being of all the residents of the county of Los Angeles.
Yo les pido por favor a todos ustedes.
I ask you, please, all of you.
Que hagan todo lo posible para que esta comisión de salud.
To do everything that is possible by this Commission of Health.
Que se encargue de los numerosos problemas que tenemos aquí en el condado de Los Angeles.
To take care of all the number of problems that we have here in the City of Los Angeles, in the county of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
The next speaker, Arturo Arias.
Good morning.
Members of the Consilio de la Ciudad de Los Angeles.
Members of the City of Los Angeles, Council of Los Angeles.
Mi nombre es Arturo Arias.
My name is Arturo Arias.
Tengo 40 años.
I am 40 years old.
Vivo aquí en Los Angeles.
I live here in Los Angeles.
Así como yo, hay un gran número de personas indocumentadas.
Like me, there are a serious number of people that are undocumented.
En el condado de Los Angeles.
In the county of Los Angeles.
Es importantísimo que la Comisión de Salud comience a trabajar lo más pronto posible.
It is very important that the Health Commission start working as soon as possible.
Para el bien de todos nosotros.
For the well-being of all of us.
Parece ser que ustedes, los miembros del Consilio de la Ciudad de Los Angeles.
It seems like you, the members of the City, the members of the City of Los Angeles.
No escuchan la, no escucha la urgencia de nosotros, residentes de Los Angeles.
Do not listen to the urgency of us, the residents of the City of Los Angeles.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And next up, Speaker Eric Previn. Is he here? Mr. Previn, you are not in the room. Next speaker, Byron Barajas. Mr. Barajas, are you here?
I have turned in a leaflet entitled "For Urgent Attention of Congressmen, Senators, and Other Members of the U.S. Government," and also anybody else who can assist in this. I think it was clear that one of the reasons why this country, and your city particularly, hasn't been producing in terms of your manufacturers, and that's another question, what are you producing? You can't just produce anything and call it manufacturing. But I think the emergency here is to bring back the Glass-Steagall law. I can tell you that Goldman Sachs has called, and the Fed has called out for a quantitative easing for another bailout in by January of next year. What that actually means is there will be no recovery. So we just got to throw Obama out past Glass-Steagall.
Thank you. Next speaker, David Hernandez, followed by Henry Marin.
Good morning, council members. Good morning, Los Angeles. David Hernandez, and could I have the officer pass these out? I'm here representing Churches in Action for Los Angeles and the All Communities Matter Cleanup Los Angeles campaign. I just wanted to give you an update. The first two weeks, the residents mainly of Council District 8 and 9 brought in 227,000 pounds of trash that was delivered back to recycling for free. I want to thank Councilmember Gakkorion's office for sending the message out, and Councilmember Sadeo's office for being very supportive of that effort. The effort was so successful as that we are continuing the effort indefinitely. The flyer that has been passed out today has to do with the October 15th date. However, since it has been so successful, that Mr. Earl Segal, the owner of the company, is extending that. Now, we realize that having a company located at Slosson and Western is not convenient for members of the San Fernando Valley, so we would encourage council members in other districts to extend that invitation to other businesses to participate. So thank you very much for all your help.
Next speaker, Henry Marin.
Yes, Ms. Martinez, as you know, Emily DeFeynd deductions account for ever sent city, county, and hacker officials sheltered from pay of craftsmen in L.A. in lieu of providing the provision some due for an Alba government service in L.A. And as you know, this money was held under public-private partnership, and not one cent of this money was provided to public employee pension benefit fund administrators as required by law, and accounted for as required by California Government Code 20305. Consequently, you now have to make back payments to public employee pension benefit plans for benefit of each one of these employees. And you've been knowing it for a thousand years, ever since Mr. Dion Roberts told you all it was illegal to use the money as agreed by the CIO and unions in L.A. on October 26, 2010. And what the hell is your problem? Yells low learners.
Bill Watkins is the next speaker.
Nice to be back. I've vowed to stay away from commenting on agenda items. That was a fiasco last time I tried to do that. And if Mr. Englander was still here, I'd apologize. You know, it becomes a fire pit, and I'm so grateful there's no heckling today in the meetings. I don't know what's changed, but thanks for that, and whoever's working on that, fantastic. It's a great day, and it's really fun to pick up trash. I've picked up six black bags in my district, District 14, since Friday. I love it, no one's paying me. I'll go over to the mayor's office and see if I can pick up some volunteer core material. Deanna, and for anybody who want to check their districts out, I know that ours needs help with gutters, and not only gutters, but drains, the drains are clogged. So Deanna, if you can make a note of that, I didn't tell Paul that drains are clogged. And, gosh, get out of those suits and pick up some trash with me today. I recommend it. It's a really nice day. God bless you.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. What's before us?
Madam President, the city attorney has an announcement he needs to make.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Just for the record on item number two, the application for determination of public convenience or necessity was denied because the applicant withdrew the application.
Very well, thank you very much. Again, Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for post and referral.
Posted and referred?
That clears the desk.
Any members, any announcements? No? Can we all please rise for adjourned motions? To my right, any adjourned motions? Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Madam President. This past Thursday, we lost one of the legendary rabbis of our time, Rabbi Jacob Pressman, who passed away in his sleep at the age of 95. He was a longtime leader of the Los Angeles Jewish community and established Temple Beth Am, which would become one of the largest conservative temples in the West, and which he led for more than 35 years. Even after his retirement from Temple Beth Am in 1985, he continued to be a wonderful speaker there for decades. He also helped found other very significant Jewish institutions in our community, including Camp Ramah, Akiva University Academy, the Brandeis Bardine Institute, the Los Angeles Hebrew High School, the University of Judaism, which later became known as the American Jewish University, Rabbi Jacob Pressman Academy, which is a combination of nursery, elementary, and secondary schools connected to Temple Beth Am, and Beth Am Manor, which is a low-rent residence for seniors. He was a wonderful human being, funny, wise, willing to be humorous and tell jokes, and even sing show tunes if the cause warranted it. But he was also there to take on many serious causes. For example, he was a longtime champion for Soviet Jews when they needed great advocacy to enable them to immigrate from persecution in the 70s. He joined Martin Luther King Jr. in Montgomery, Alabama, in the protest march of 1965. He created one of America's first Holocaust memorials, wrote two books and weekly columns for the Beverly Hills Courier, served as chair of the Jewish Federation, was past president of the Western Region of Biblical Assembly, and president of the Board of Rabbis of Los Angeles. He was also the founding president of the Maple Counseling Center. Rabbi Pressman will always be remembered in loving memory by countless congregants and other friends through the community, not only because he was a wondrous rabbi, but because of his manner. He was a rabbi who wouldn't hesitate to visit door to door, so often speaking to families and individuals at one at a time and face to face, and always remembering their names in the detail of their lives, while counseling and inspiring them in the most personal, honest, respectful, and meaningful way. He is survived by his wife Marjorie, his wife of more than 70 years, his son Daniel, who's also a rabbi, daughter Judy, five grandchildren, and three great-grandchildren. His son Joel, a teacher at Beverly Hills High School, passed away in 2014. He'll be much missed and always treasured.
Thank you, Mr. Root.
Madam President, thank you. Today, I would like to adjourn in the memory of Leslie Luis Denelian, who passed away peacefully on the morning of September 18th after a two-and-a-half-year battle with brain cancer. Leslie was born June 12th, 1959, to Luis and Richard Denelian, here in Los Angeles. She attended University High School before studying English at USC. Among her many Among her many talents, Leslie was an incredible cook. She set up a catering company, which eventually led to opening her own restaurant, Sweet Butter Kitchen in Sherman Oaks, which was a huge success. But all of her incredible achievements, her greatest accomplishment was raising her two children, Andrew and Emily. Leslie was an incredible comfort to all those around her, and all those who knew and loved her are suffering a deep loss. She is survived by her mother, Luis Denelian, her children's Andrew and Emily Smith, her loving husband, Richard Burge, and her brother Stephen Denelian. In lieu of flowers, the family is asking that we please consider a donation to the UCLA Neuroscience Department. Thank you, and may all your thoughts and prayers today be with the family and friends of Leslie Denelian.
Sorry to hear that, Mr. Root. Sweet Butter is an amazing restaurant. Condolences to her family. Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you, Madam President. Members, on October 1st, our country suffered its 294th mass shooting of 2015, when Umpqua Community College was devastated by a mass murderer who took the lives of young people who were trying to build a future for themselves, people who were trying to transform their lives, people who were trying to change the lives of others. In the five days since the Umpqua Community College shooting, we've had three more mass shootings in this country, but they didn't make the headlines. But for the moment, I'd ask that we adjourn the City Council, this City Council meeting in memory of Quinn Cooper, age 18, Rebecca Carnes, age 18, Lucas Ibel, age 19, Lucero Alcarez, 19, Trevin Ansbach, age 20, Jason Johnson, age 33, Serena Moore, age 44, Kim Dietz, age 59, and Larry Levine, age 67. And may their families find some peace and comfort in this absolutely unexplainable, horrid tragedy. I'd also ask, Madam President, if I could, that we adjourn in memory of Michaela Dyer. Michaela was eight years old, and on Saturday she was playing with a puppy. Her neighbor, who was aged 11, wanted to play with the puppy, and when she told him no, he went to his house, got his unlocked, fully-loaded 12-gauge shotgun from his father's closet, and he killed Michaela over the puppy. After a long history of Michaela's mother complaining about the bullying that she'd received from this 11-year-old, nonetheless, this 11-year-old's parents found it appropriate to have a fully-loaded, unlocked shotgun in the closet. I ask that we adjourn the council in memory of Michaela Dyer.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian. Mr. Englander.
Colleagues, I'm sure many of you, you Roberta Boardman as well, as I did, and it was with great sadness that I adjourn in her memory. She passed away, however, peacefully with her family by her side on September 18th in Northridge, California, after a long illness with lung cancer. Born and raised in the San Fernando Valley, Roberta was a self-proclaimed original Valley girl. After being a stay-at-home mom, she became a Vista volunteer for two years in identifying and setting up programs for emergency food and housing for those in need throughout the San Fernando Valley. She was then hired to be part of the L.A. city family, where she was the deputy to Los Angeles City Council members Joy Picas and then Joel Wax. She was also a consultant with Delphi Associates, executive director of the Tarzana Chamber of Commerce, and office administrator for the California State PTA. She was active in numerous organizations, such as the Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce, Mothers Against Drunk Driving, San Fernando Valley Girl Scout Council, Haven Hills, West Valley Pals, Guadalupe Youth Center, Sherwood Forest Homeowners Association, 4-H Clubs, the League of Women Voters, the Greater Los Angeles Zoo Association, the L.A. Philharmonic, and the San Fernando Valley Chapter of the National Women's Political Caucus. Our deepest sympathies go to her family. She leaves behind her children Bridget, Julie, Wendy, and Robert, and her nine grandchildren, three great-grandchildren, and two twin sisters. Roberta is now with her departed soulmate Dallas, who unfortunately left her in March 2009. A celebration of her life will be held at 2:00 PM on October 10th at the Lifehouse Church located at 18355 Roscoe Boulevard in Northridge, California. In lieu of flowers, the family is asking donations to be made in Roberta's honor to the National Women's Political Caucus, San Fernando Valley Chapter. She was a dear friend and a true Valley girl. And, you know, for those of you that had the fortunate experience of knowing Roberta and working with her, she always showed up to everything with a smile, asking to help. She always had an opinion of everything and everyone, and it was always positive, and she always wanted to share it. She was always full of life and wanting to give back and make our community a better place, and I know she's done that. And she will be missed. May Roberta Boardman forever rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner.
Hey, colleagues, I'd like to adjourn today in memory of a constituent of mine, Jack Larson of Brentwood, who passed away during our recess at age 87. Jack was a native of Los Angeles. He was a playwright, a screenwriter, a producer, and an actor. Most of us will remember him from his most prominent acting role as Jimmy Olsen on the 1950s George Reeves series, The Adventures of Superman. It was a role he was very reluctant to take because he was afraid he would get typecast. And his agent talked him into it, saying, "The show will probably never even air, just take it." He took the job, and of course, he was typecast, and it was hard for him to escape that role. So he moved into behind-the-screens work and actually did a lot of great work, but never shied away from his role as Jimmy Olsen and co-starred or did cameo appearances in Lois and Clark and the Superboy television show. But there's something else about Jack Larson that I think is remarkable that I'd like him to be remembered for. At a time when gay men would marry women in the 1950s and the 1960s, at a time when Hollywood made arranged marriages or fake partnerships for their actors and actresses, Jack Larson was, not particularly ostentatiously, but unapologetically openly gay, and was in a long-term relationship, lived in Brentwood with his partner James Bridges from 1958 until James died in 1993. And that was an incredible and unusual thing at that time. And I was proud he was a constituent of mine. He was much loved in Brentwood and in Hollywood and beyond. So I'd like us to adjourn in his memory today. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Mr. Weezer.
And colleagues asked that we adjourn in memory of a great Elserino resident, Gilbert Elias Chico. He grew up in Elserino and attended Waldorf Wilson High School and graduated in 1974. He played various sports, including being a star in the varsity basketball team. He loved the Los Angeles Lakers, but loved his UCLA Bruins even more, having season tickets to football and basketball there, and he never missed one of those games. He came from a great musical family, the Chico Band, that played at various our community events. He enjoyed playing guitar for family and friends as well, but what he loved most was spending time with his family. His late father, Elias Chico, founded the Chicana Nurses Program while employed at the Los Angeles County Health Department. He is survived by his mother Amelia, brothers Benjamin and Elias, sisters Angie and Lisa, many other family members. Condolences to his family and friends and the Elserino community certainly will miss a great brother. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. I see no other adjourned motions. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.